Okay, we'll go ahead and call them to order the January 18th meeting of the City Council to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia's stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome, everyone. A long day for the City Council members. They were on a just citywide tour earlier today from probably 10 to 2 roughly. Concluding of a long day for all of the members of City Council. With that, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Motion is second to approve the agenda as presented. Any questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Two sets of minutes from January 4th. Let the record show all members present. Sorry.
Oh, yes.
Two sets of minutes from January 4th regular meeting and January 7th special meeting. Entertained a motion to approve those. Motion is second to approve the minutes as presented. Any questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Bills and claims were submitted with your packet totaled $347,397.46. Entertained a motion to approve as presented. Motion is second to approve the bills and claims as presented in the packet. Any questions from council? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have a number of plaids to approve under the consent calendar. I entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. Motion is second to approve the consent calendar as presented. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Community input time is scheduled now. Anyone wishing to address the council may do so at this time. Don't appear like anyone. So we'll move on to committee reports. Golf course. We have an end of year presentation from Mr. Andrew Bauer.
All right, I had kind of this time last year, I expressed wanting to start doing this at the end of every year, kind of going over the previous season, some highlights, maybe some lowlights, although there weren't too many of them this year. So I think that's really important to go over that and not just kind of boil it down in numbers on a spreadsheet. So the main highlight of the year was the weather. We had 215 playable days this year. The four-year average of playable days is around 175, 180. So we almost added a month, maybe a month and a half to our normal golfing season. The last four years have also haven't been the best. The last two years playable days averaged 160. So we increased that pretty dramatically. When you break it down by month, our main months were still June through August. Each of those averaged about 5,000 rounds. So whether the early spring or late fall is better, we still do the bulk of our rounds in those three months. And then May and September, kind of the shoulders, were about 3,000 in each month. And then the rest trickle in outside of those. We did, we're lucky enough, November 4th through November 8th, the average high was 76 degrees. So we did about 750 rounds in those five days in November, which is excellent for us. The year started out with a lot of things different. As everywhere else, we had our own regulations and ways we did things because of COVID. So we had one rider per cart until the end of May. We started on number 10 instead of number one to better control the first tee box and not have as many people come inside. So whenever we are starting in number 10, that will certainly impact the lounge, as you're not coming past the lounge after nine holes. You have to come up the hill to hit it. So I'm sure that had some sort of effect. It didn't help the lounge was only open for takeout as well. So that impacted that. We offered a discount to prepay online, which went really well, introduced a lot of people to our online software. And the more people we can have using our online, the less the phone rings, less time staff has to spend on the phone. We did 12-minute tee time intervals. So during that two months, our occupancy was decreased by about 50 golfers a day that we could have. So anytime we would fill up, that would limit the number of golfers we could have, as we were being really cognizant and not trying to jam people out there, so to speak, and have them really close together. And then we did staff an extra person every day to sanitize golf carts for two months. And that went really well. All the staff did a good job. I'm really proud of the way they handled all of it. Onto some exciting or not so exciting, our capital improvements for this year. The biggest one was our irrigation pump project. We fixed those from the being underwater from the flooding. This was a huge priority. Without them, the water, we only had one running pump and it had to be manually turned on and off. So we're extremely thankful for having that done. And we're hoping that we get, you know, a good percentage, 85% of that covered through FEMA and the state. So that'll help with that. We spent $14,000 on Landscapes Unlimited to consult from March through end of May. So they consulted with Pro Shop and marketing plans. That was the packet you got at the early June, kind of their overview of the golf course. As far as the bank stabilization goes, we spent $13,400 on that in order to plan for this project we have hopefully starting in the next couple of weeks. We finished our river pump project. That was the electric pump that goes in the river. Neighbors did not like the old gas one. It was loud. So now we have the electric river pump. It works great. So we finished that project up. We finished the dance floor upstairs. We reded it. That's been in the budget since 2016, and we finally did it this year. So I'm very happy, and we did that $3,000 under budget. So we're very happy with that project. We did some planning. I think it's a concept plan for our retaining wall and parking lot for future capital expenses. So we know what we're looking at there. We have a plan. That's really positive. And then we bought a dishwasher. We were leasing the dishwasher before, and Christina ran some numbers and said, "Let's buy one. We're throwing money away on this lease." So those are the capital improvements. So that's about as long a list as the previous 10 years were that we accomplished in one year. So I'm very happy and very thankful that you all allowed us to start getting some much-needed work done at the course. As far as debt goes, we have the building. Everyone knows that. This year was $143,000, about one year left, 2021, and the building is paid off. So I think that's been looked forward to for a lot, a lot of years. Our golf carts, we spent $39,500 on golf carts this year. So that's one of the attachments I provided when we, I came to you guys last fall asking to get new golf carts. I laid out a plan of what we could expect to see from it, and it came to fruition. I'm extremely happy. The only thing that fell outside of what I was thinking is the cart barn was much more expensive to upgrade, but it was still less than the cost of what gas would be. And now we don't have the cart barn remodeling expense going forward, so we can only see that number go up hopefully. So we actually netted, when you take the cart payment out, $28,000 more than we would have had we stayed with our old carts and kept those and kept incurring those expenses and whatnot. And then I think anyone who played golf out there this year and before would say that the golf cart experience was much better. 71% of our rounds are ridden in our golf carts. And you spend about 75% of your time in the golf cart when you're there. So if you're in a less-than-stellar golf cart, you take notice. So we're very thankful of that. I'm thankful that you guys believed in me and allowed us to do that and upgrade our golf carts. And then maintenance equipment, we're on our last year of the equipment we got five years ago. And so we're, as you guys, we approved a couple of months ago, we're going to restart that on a new one, replace even more equipment. So that's awesome. As far as revenues, the Pro Shop increased its revenue $160,000 over the last four-year averages. So I'm extremely happy with that. Green fees increased $109,000 alone over the four-year average. Lot of factors, the extra rounds. We did 24,694 rounds this year, which is about 4,000 more than the four-year average. Our pricing, we did a better job pricing to the market. We weren't the lowest available anymore. And then the good weather, it just, it keeps people coming out and golfing. Our cart fees, we increased 52,000, which was even better than I projected. And then merchandise in the shop, we hit it right on about the average 56,000, but our expenses were 33,000 opposed to the average of 50,000. So I think we improved that by about 15,000 to 20,000 on the merchandise as well. Outings-wise, we did lose, I think it was nine outings, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 12, sorry, 12 outings due to COVID. I kind of put a sheet together to show what we made those days when we didn't have them compared. And my best estimate is that costs about $30,000 in revenue. Today I dove into lounge numbers. It's really hard to guess what we would have done for lounge numbers, but I'm estimating about 35,000 lost on the outings. For example, the last one on the list, Ron Weber, his catering, food and beverage bill last year was over $12,000. And so we lost that one. And that's in September, too, kind of our shoulder season. So it's a really tough event to lose. On the same token, the community room lost eight weddings. They had four or five that were postponed this year, so they'll, they're coming back this year. And on average, about half of the people's count showed up. So if we had planned for 250, they had 125. So that hurts revenue and beer sales. If you're expecting everyone to pay $9 towards a drink, you lose that when they don't show up. We did have a beanbag tournament in February upstairs and a beanbag league in the fall. So that was helpful. We got more people inside. It went really well. We're really happy with it. We're going to continue to do that and try and expand into some other things. And then we do have a church that we'll be renting the community room for 2021. So we're already off to a really good start there. Lounge, kind of the same thing. It was closed March through May, except for takeout. And the lounge kind of goes as events go. So we lose a few events. It hurts the lounge probably more than the golf, because we can make up for it by filling the tee sheet, but they're not going to do the same sales during regular play as they will do during a special event. So that's about everything I have. I just wanted to highlight some things. If anyone has any questions on this year, I will be more than happy to answer them.
So either the church that's going to rent it, is it like just renting?
They're renting it every Sunday for the whole year. Yep, they signed a contract for the whole year. So that's really good.
What revenue will that bring in for us?
I think it's $1750 a month. So close to $20,000 for the year.
Okay.
Well, thank you for this.
How about your, Andrew, what's the status of the golf cart, GPS?
Yep, so I've talked to the salesperson for that. We're probably going to dive into it a little more end of February. They can't come install them until April probably anyway, but we'll get that figured out, what we're going with. They've got materials for selling ads and whatnot, so I'm going to be getting those here in the next month. And once I have enough ad commitments, we'll be able to pull the trigger on it.
How you doing on the ad commitments?
What's that?
How you doing on the ad?
I haven't done anything for it yet. I'm waiting for, he's got, they've got a whole sales package that goes with it. So we need to figure out which ones we're getting and what model and all that stuff.
So Andrew, the tournaments that canceled because of COVID, you anticipate getting them back?
Yeah, I think all but two of them have booked already for next year. And some, and overall, all our outings are coming back, save the two or three that rotate every year anyway. So they'll be, you know, here every three years and stuff like that. And we'll always, I'm fielding calls all the time, looking for events. So if we have availability, we're able to book events most times.
Do you anticipate they having to do some advertising to get those?
The GPS sales?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably. We'll probably do a little bit. Yep. I mean, most of it will probably be person-to-person, all, you know. I'm, I know a lot of, if not most, of business owners in town, and I'm sure it won't just be Brandon that's advertising on there. So I'm hoping to sell 34 of them. And we'll do a package, we're going to do some sort of package with it where we're going to have a day where all the sponsors get a golf outing event, and it'll be worth, it'll be worth it. It'll be a really good thing.
Very good, Andrew. Any other questions?
All right, thank you, everybody.
Just a second.
Yep.
I got one little comment. I couldn't be more proud of you. You did one heck of a job out there.
Thank you.
I mean, all this COVID stuff, and you probably had the greatest year the golf course has ever had. So I couldn't be more proud of the job you've done out there.
Thank you. I appreciate it very much. Thank you, everybody.
You're going to report into it, not, right, Mayor?
No, she doesn't like that. Parks and Rec, we have a work report, and then we have resolution 0-21 to revise the pool entrance fees for the 2021 year. Kind of a summary, increasing child rates $10 to 40, adult $10 to 50, and increasing the family pass $30 to 100. A daily pass will go up $1 to $4. Kind of a summary of those. So I entertain a motion to approve the resolution as presented, increasing the pool fees. Motion is second to approve the resolution 0-221.
Can I?
Any questions?
I do. I just have a comment with this. I'm just gonna, I don't feel comfortable with raising the rate for a couple of reasons. One, it's a 33% increase. I would like to see more of a gradual increase. As a mother, you know, with a family that has small kids, that's a huge increase when families have a budget. The other thing with COVID being shut down last year, I know all pools were shut down, but we know you couldn't find a pool anywhere. So I feel like a lot of families purchased their own pool. And so we have that going against us going into the new year. And then the fact that we know there's going to be some road construction on that road. So I just feel the 33% increase is kind of a perfect storm to make this not be, I think it's a wonderful addition to the pool. I just don't want it to not have, receive the participation or that it could have if we didn't do such an increase, knowing that, you know, some people might opt not to buy passes anyways because they bought a pool. And the fact, too, that they can go to Sioux Falls and use all their pools in Midco for $100. And so I just don't, I think what we did was wonderful. I just don't, I just, I hope people will do it, even though we increased it by 33%. So this is what I want to say.
Are there any other questions, comments, council?
Did you have another proposal in mind, Vicky?
No, other than I just think, I can, I see why you needed to increase it, but just 33%. I just think it's a huge jump, considering we haven't done anything. So even, I don't know what it would look like, $5, if we would do slowly over the next couple of years, do it. I just feel like it's much-needed improvements. I'm excited for that pool to be done. I just don't want some people to, especially with families that are going to be buying the passes, they still have to think about if their kids are in sports, and then the equipment, and then the cost of the fees, and then the pool on top of it, and then the road construction. And if you already bought a pool and had it, well, why buy a pass? I just think it's wonderful. I want people to come out and try to see the pool and not just say it's too expensive and not try it. So I would like to see smaller increments. I don't know what that perfect thing is. I don't know if Park Board discussed anything, but I just think a little bit smaller than 33% would be nice.
Barb, can you chime in on Park Board? Did they readdress it?
We talked about it, but I honestly, I did not sit down and calculate the percentage increase, and that's my bad on that. There wasn't a lot of discussion on it, was there, Christina? I think we looked at, we haven't raised it for a while. It's a new equipment. People will be excited about it. So it wasn't like, what do I want to say? You know, a big discussion point, I guess.
Their recommendation was to move forward, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Christina, call the roll, please.
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Fish?
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parliament?
Aye.
This is 5-1. Very good. We have a proposal from DGR Engineering to design and bid the Aspen Park Road upgrades. That cost $53,500. Entertain a motion to approve that contract. Motion is second to approve the contract for Aspen Park Road upgrades from DGR Engineering. Any questions?
So, yes, one quick one. Tammy, what exactly are we getting for this design contract?
So this design includes the road coming into Aspen Park, the parking lot over by the fields, and then the utilities and the gravel road that would connect down into Ironwood.
The parking lot, what do you mean?
The parking lot area that's kind of roped off in gravel right now. We would design that so that we know how many parking stalls are going to go in there in the future.
That would design an asphalt parking lot, you're saying?
Right. Not constructed this next year, but the design of it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And just to note, I did reach out to baseball and softball. They both really want this road to be redone. I did mention that this is just the design, and as we start working through the details for the construction set, that between Devin and I, we would reach out to them and make sure that they're okay with the schedule and the details of that.
Doesn't this, doesn't this include design and the bid documents?
It does, yes. It does have the bid documents.
Okay, that was my question. So the documents will, would lay out the plan and the sequence of events, basically?
Right, yep.
Any other questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Along with that, we have the geotechnical proposal from Geotech Engineering for Aspen Park in an amount not to exceed $5,750. I'd entertain a motion to approve that. Motion is second to approve Geotech for the geotechnical aspects of the Aspen Park Road improvements. Any questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, on the agenda, we have a proposal from AE2S to perform a rainwater, stormwater utility fee proposal, rate proposal for the city of Brandon in an amount, for an amount not to exceed $60,000. I'd entertain a motion to approve that contract. Motion is second to approve the proposal from AE2S as presented. Any questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number D2, we have resolution 03-221, year-end transfer of funds, $374,000 to the golf course and $15,460 on the Ironwood project. Are those the two? I entertain a motion to approve those accounting adjustments included in resolution 03-21. Motion is second to approve resolution 03-21 as presented. Any questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have a wage adjustment for Karen Kaiser to $14.55 an hour. Motion? Motion is second to approve wage adjustment to Karen Kaiser in an amount of $14.55 an hour. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item D4, we have a proposal from the administration to make some changes in the personnel manual with respect to sick leave donations and COVID leave. The federal COVID leave is expiring as of 12/31. The required 10 days leave, so the administration has presented a proposal to allow the staff to make sick leave donations to other staff members prior to exhausting all of their sick leave. It would be at 40 hours rather than zero hours. I entertain a motion to approve that recommendation from the administration. Motion is second to approve the changes in personnel manual on sick leave donations as presented. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. D5 is approval of an annexation study to be performed by CCOG, Southeastern Council of Governments, on Redwood Boulevard east of the Golf Course Bridge and Chestnut Avenue north of Oak Hill Circle. Entertain a motion to approve as presented? Motion is second to approve, questions?
We want to make it clear that this is just a study.
Correct, that's, we're approving a study to be performed by CCOG.
When will we get the study back? Any idea?
A lot of that depends on some of the preliminary engineering and some of the other policies that we need to update during this process. I would think that we could get the study done by the end of the year, but it might be early next year.
And the letter in the packets going out to residents affected tomorrow?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Anything on your website there about it, or not?
Not yet.
The letter that council is referring to, I guess I should add, because we're being pretty cryptic here, is a letter that'll go out to the affected homeowners in that area. That's the letter that was referred to. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The street department work report is there for your review. And then item E2, we have an agreement with the Brandon Township to make the course and railroad crossing improvements that we've been looking at for quite some time. I entertain a motion to approve that agreement with Brandon Township. Motion is second to approve the agreement with Brandon Township with respect to the course and rail crossing improvements. Presenting any questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. E3, we have a design proposal from DGR Engineering, again, on the Redwood-Chestnut preliminary design plan in the amount of $142,850. Entertain a motion. Motion is second to approve the Redwood-Chestnut preliminary design proposal from DGR Engineering. Questions? Comments? The amount of $142,850. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Along with that, we have the geotechnical proposal from Geotech with that same project in the amount of $5,650. I'd entertain a motion. Motion is second to approve E4 as presented. Any questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Under new business, we had Christina included all the preliminary year-end financial statements for your review, sales tax report for the 12 months ending December, showing an increase of sales tax year-over-year of 5.6%. year-over-year of 5.6%. $3,527,000. Any questions on the financial statements for Christina, preliminary? Next step will be the audit of those financial statements, it will happen sometime in the next couple of months, I assume. Uh, with that, no further business, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn at 6:29. Motion is second to adjourn at 6:29 PM. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Have a good week.